Good evening, welcome to the March 12th, 2025 meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I guess with the clock is maybe a minute or two behind. But anyway, it is five o'clock. Roll call please, Mr. Navarro?
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Joyce.
Present.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Weiss.
Please rise for the invocation. Tonight, we have Reverend Dr. John D. Hill of Walker Chapel AME Church. Well, maybe he's not here yet. Okay, who is next? It would be Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Did you do the pledge last time?
I did not, but I can do it.
Yes, please lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
I can do that too. Please join me in the pledge, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our common purpose.
Thank you, you may be seated. I do have a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the Pa'um Ca'uchum, people of the West, as the traditional land caretakers of the land on which Oceanside is built and its surrounding traditional cultural landscapes. Today, the Pa'um Ca'uchum are known as Liseño and are made up of seven bands: La Jolla, Palapauma, Pechanga, Rincon, San Luis Rey, and Soboba. We are mindful of the indigenous peoples in this place, and we pay our respects to the Liseño, past, present, and emerging. We are grateful to have the opportunity to be part of this community in Liseño Territory and to honor their history, culture, and perseverance of spirit. Thank you. And now for the presentations and proclamations. I don't see our pet of the month. Oh, I do, yes. Pet of the Month, okay. We have the San Diego Humane Society.
Hello, everybody and councilmembers. Thank you for letting us join you all today. This is, oh, thank you. This is Mr. Charlie. He's just one of the dogs available for adoption through the San Diego Humane Society's Oceanside campus. He is, like I said, 13 years young. He came into our campus on February 21st. He was an owner surrender, which does happen. It's hard times right now, so thankfully, people can go to the shelter to get help. We also, if you are looking to adopt, we actually have, thanks to Pet Co. Love, we have a promotion starting for St. Patrick's Day on March 14th to the 16th. Where all adult dogs, seven months and older, are 50% off. So that includes their spay and neuter, their microchip, their up-to-date vaccinations. You get a free 30-day pet insurance, free pet food to go home, all of the things. And then also, if you know anybody that is struggling right now, because I know a lot of us have a lot of family, friends, neighbors that are struggling, we do have a pet pantry to where anybody can come into any one of our campuses, it's our Airport Road Campus, and grab a bag of dog food or cat food, just to help them along the way, just because everything is getting so expensive. So that's an avenue to definitely try to keep people and their pets together. And then, we also have our vaccine clinic, which has very reasonable vaccines. They're usually like $20 a pop, which is pretty cheap. It's a very reasonable price to get your animals vaccinated, that's dogs, cats, and we do the rabbit vaccine as well. And then also, we have our Walk for Animals coming up on Saturday, March 22nd, at Carson Park in Escondido. So if you aren't attending and you'd like to check it out, check out our website, sdhumane.org. And just know, we are here for, if you need any help, if you want to volunteer, if you want to adopt, if you want to just come and look around and see what we do. Thank you. It takes a village to get these animals seen and heard and get them adopted, and it really helps with the community of all of you. So, thank you so much, and have a lovely day.
Mr. Charlie, right?
Charlie!
Hi, Mr. Charlie. Okay, who's gonna adopt him? I mean, look, did you see him smiling the entire time?
His feet, his feet are adults.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, I always have the pet of the month first, because, you know, they steal the show, right? So, but next, on our proclamation presentation, it's a proclamation in honor of National Women's History Month. And so excited about this. We have three organizations that we're calling forth. We have the Oceanside Women's Club, come on down. And we have the North County African-American Women's Association, come on down, thank you. And we have the organizers of the first International Women's Day here, who just celebrated this day, this past Saturday on the 8th. So we have Joanne Toffelis, we have Chema Navarro, and I believe we have someone else. Yes, come on down. And this is really, really exciting, what's happening in Oceanside and the various activities that our women's organizations do for us. I do have the proclamation, and then I'm gonna be having each organization say a few words, alright? So whereas, a national campaign to honor the role that women have played in the history of the United States began in California, of course, in 1978, with Women's History Week around March 8th, International Women's Day, then with the Presidential Proclamation in 1980 by President Carter for a National Women's Week. 14 states followed with declarations extending the week to Women's History Month, leading to congressional action in 1987 declaring March as National Women's History Month in perpetuity. A special presidential proclamation is now issued every year, which honors the extraordinary achievements of American women. And whereas, American women and girls of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our country in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of our country by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home, as well as serving our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been political leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage, equal opportunity, and rights to choose, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, the peace movement, and others, creating a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, the Women's Club of Oceanside was formed on January 4th, 1918, joining, yes, joining the General Federation of Women's Clubs in 1920, dedicated to enhancing our local community through the arts, conservation, education, home life, and public affairs, providing scholarships to local high school seniors and nursing students, funding to high school music and arts programs, the Oceanside Boys and Girls Club, Oceanside Police and Fire Departments and Personnel, the Women's Resource Center, and countless other charities, donating millions of volunteer hours and raising and donating over $8 million. And whereas, the North County African-American Women's Association began in 1995, when the Oceanside Unified School District received a grant from the California Department of Education, Carl Perkins Vocational and Occupational Act Gender Equity Program. A professional group of mentoring women, mostly educators, organized a conference for young girls and single displaced homemakers looking to re-enter the workforce. As a result of the conference, the North County African-American Women's Association was born, becoming self-sustaining, raising money for scholarships, empowering young and adult women through educational advancement, health awareness, and improvement in life skills. This year, the NCAAWA will be holding its 2025 Women's Conference and 30th Anniversary Celebration this coming Saturday, March 15th, and its 28th Annual Gentlemen's Gourmet, their largest fundraising event, that should not, never be missed, by the way, that is attended by hundreds, including leaders from all fields. And whereas, Joanne Toffelis, director-owner of the Murmied Mural Museum and Art Miles Mural Project, Sedma Navarro, board member of Oceanside Dia de los Muertos and the Oceanside Committee Relations Commission, and Veronica Gutierrez, community activist and artist, came together to create the first Oceanside International Women's Day event this past Saturday on March 8th, 2025, honoring women leaders and presenting nationally renowned and inspirational speakers. Sponsors include the Oceanside Public Library, Bor Cembri Car Club, Oceanside Dia de los Muertos, and UNESCO Center for Peace. And whereas, despite all these contributions to our country and to Oceanside, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teachings, and study of American history. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do proclaim March 2025 as National Women's History Month in the city of Oceanside, and ask all residents to join us in celebrating women's history, achievements, and challenges with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, including this coming Saturday, right? And I know, and I know, the Oceanside Women's Club also has other activities, so I'm sure you're gonna be talking about that. So, a big hand for these women, been doing so much for Oceanside. I'm gonna go ahead and do it in the order.
Rose Teddick. Hi, my name is Rose Teddick. I was past president of the Women's Club of Oceanside, and now I'm the parliamentarian, and I'm here with these lovely ladies, and we just have a lot going on. We just celebrated our 107th birthday in January, we're very excited about that. And we also had a pancake breakfast in January, raising money for the Oceanside High School Choir, which we have been doing for the past several years, to help them go on their field trips. We also do other things, you know, such as donate to Brother Benno's, what else?
Scholarships to the three different high schools on Oceanside, seniors.
Operation Hope on Brother Benno's.
Yes, that's what we do, and...
And you have any conferences coming up, right?
Yes, we do. We have the Palomar District Convention that's coming up, it'll be held at the Women's Club of Carlsbad, and we have our lovely speaker who's gonna be there, yes, Esther Sanchez, and it's gonna be very exciting, you know, and if you guys come check us out, we're online, and thank you very much, it's an honor to be recognized again, thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes. Linda?
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor Sanchez and the council, thank you so much for this prestigious award. On behalf of North County African-American Women's Association, we are happy to serve the community in which we live in. We mentor many, we have three mentoring programs, we have become a global citizen, we have global ambassadors, and we also have luminary sisters right now, that we're busy working with in our community. We spend a lot of time, energy, and effort, we're all volunteers, no one gets paid for this. So we want to give back to the community that gives us so much, and we thank you all for your support, and whenever we call Mayor Sanchez, you are there, we appreciate you, we appreciate our council representation, and yes, we're having our 30th anniversary this Saturday, and I want Ray to share a little bit.
The theme of our conference is reflecting our past, shaping our future, and we really feel that that's something that we need to do as women, we need to reflect on what it is that we've been doing already, and we need to prepare for what it is that we need to do for the future. We're looking forward to it, we're looking forward to having over 300 people or 200 people at our conferences this week, and we just really feel that the work that we do in the community by giving back through our scholarships and through our Gentlemen's Gourmet, and the work that we're doing with mentoring, is really significant and very much important, and we thank you.
Janetha Bailey Long, I was past lead for the mentoring program, and one of the judge, the chairperson for the judge at our Gentlemen's Gourmet, and just to let you know, this organization has raised close to half a million dollars for scholarships for girls in our community, and we are so happy that we're celebrating our 30th year in, as an organization here in Oceanside. And Rayklin Denning is one of our founders, and this is our last year's president, right? Linda's past president, Linda Simkin Berry.
Thank you. I forgot to ask you to, to tell us who you've brought with you.
Oh, yes, this is Isela Sharp, she's our vice president of membership, and then this is Carol Boyer, she's our financial secretary. You guys wanna say something real quick?
I'd like to invite all the ladies here to come to our meeting Thursdays, the first Thursday of the Bund, and we have a lot, a lot of fun, we're always laughing and doing things, so you're all welcome. Our clubhouse is on Missouri Avenue, Missouri Street, and not too far from here, so you are welcome, and if you're interested, you could see me later on, after the meeting. What time? Oh, the meeting starts at, well, 9:30, we have like a stack type, and then the meeting starts at 10, 10 to 12, and you're welcome to come, please do.
If you wanna work with the team, if you wanna volunteer to give back to your community, the Oceanside Women's Club is one of the places that you can go. We enjoy each other, and we try to work together to get things accomplished. Thank you.
And you know, they have their own clubhouse in, near the Crown Heights community, so this is something, this is a very, very here-to-stay, Oceanside Women's Club. I'm gonna hand the mic to Joanne Toffelis to talk about this past Saturday's wonderful event.
Well, everybody should know, if you haven't figured it out by now, that women hold up half the sky. Maybe more, in some cases. But I have had the honor to work with two wonderful women volunteers, Chema and Vero, who came out of the grace of God to make this happen. We had our first United Nations Education Scientific and Cultural Organization, International Women's Day. I'm normally at the Conference on the Status of Women in New York, at the UN, this time of year, but I decided to start for the first time, since I'm also the UNESCO Center for Peace Director for all of California and Baja, that we would start right here and recognize heroes, the local unsung heroes, and look at this, maybe next year, you'll be part of this, I hope. Look out when we all get together, because when we unify, we can make magic happen. And it happened within a short timeframe, we had Esther come and honor her, because we know that she's a hero, a shiro, and congratulating her for being the people's mayor. And we had a video message from Ambassador Chowdhury from the United Nations, and what we plan to do is we're gonna keep getting women to vote, because women have to rule. And Ambassador Chowdhury, my mentor, said, "If we want peace, we have to have women at the peace table. If we want development and we want peace, we have to have women play a role in that." I mean, I'll go down to the micro part about architects who build kitchens for women that are, the counters are up here, trying to do something and cook. Anyway, you know, what's going on in the world right now, we need women at the peace table more than ever, and in our own neighborhoods, where I get really tired of saying, "These are gang kids," or whatever. Baldarama Park was a great experiment, Landis Park was a great experiment, and experience to find out how many beautiful people live in these neighborhoods, and instead of name-calling and keeping people in these categories, what we're trying to do, and what these wonderful women have done, is brought them out to share that experience and make everybody proud of their community. So to create a culture of peace, we start right here, in our own hearts, in our own neighborhood. I'm gonna turn this over to Chema.
Hello, I'm Sedma Navarro, I'm very honored to have been here. I'd like to thank all the ladies here, and I'm guessing, since it's Women's Month, we can do whatever we want, nobody can tell us anything, right? So anyways, I wanna especially thank Esther, first woman mayor. She is, she has always been so humble and never brags about anything she does, other people take credit for what she does, and she doesn't say anything, she's such a forgiving, loving person, and I just think that she's wonderful, and so are all these ladies that do these amazing things, so I just wanna thank everybody, all these women, I mean, you all deserve a big thank you for everything that you do in the community.
I'll be quick and short, I just wanna say thank you to the women in the past, the present, the future, thank you all for being here, and thank you to these inspirational women.
Thank you, Vero. Short on words, but her actions really speak really loudly, thank you for being here. We're gonna take a picture, so get closer, yes? Because here's history, history, in the making, being made, and what year was it that the Women's Club of Oceanside was, 1918? 1918, can you believe that in Oceanside? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we do have one more proclamation, and this is a new one for Oceanside. Really, really happy that we're able to do this. This is a proclamation in honor of MS Awareness Week 2025. So we have a couple of people, are you gonna come down? To help me do this? We have Cheryl Weeks-Frey and Melinda Thrasher. These women are district activist leaders for the National Multiple Sclerosis Society for the Pacific South Coast Chapter here in Oceanside. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the proclamation, then hand the mic over, okay? Okay, hand it to Melinda, okay? I take orders pretty well. Whereas, multiple sclerosis is a neurological disease of the central nervous system affecting over 1 million people in the United States alone. And whereas, multiple sclerosis generally strikes people in the prime of life, between ages 20 through 50, and the cause and cause of the often debilitating symptoms of MS remain unknown, and no cure currently exists. And whereas, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society is committed to a world free of MS, heightening public knowledge about and insight into the disease. And whereas, together we have transformed what it means to live with MS and provide global leadership to help achieve the vision of a world free of MS. And whereas, since 1946, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been a driving force of MS research, relentlessly pursuing prevention, treatment, and a cure, and has invested more than $1 billion in groundbreaking research. And whereas, funds raised through the National Multiple Sclerosis Society fuel research on pathways to MS cures and invest in the MS research workforce at the best medical centers, universities, and other institutions throughout the US and abroad, leading to many breakthroughs in the treatment of MS. And whereas, the mission of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society is to cure MS while empowering people affected by MS to live their best lives, and one that all Americans and Californians should support. And whereas, the city of Oceanside, California recognizes the importance of finding the cause and cure of MS, and hereby expresses its appreciation for the dedication that the National Multiple Sclerosis Society Pacific South Coast Chapter has shown towards creating a world free of MS. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim March 9th through the 15th, 2025, as MS Awareness Week 2025 in the city of Oceanside, and do commend this observance to all our citizens. I encourage the residents of our city of Oceanside to learn more about multiple sclerosis and what we can do to support individuals with MS and their families. Thank you.
Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to raise MS awareness for the city of Oceanside. My name is Melinda Thrasher, and Cheryl and I are on the board, we're volunteers, as are many people, when the city council, I'm also on the Bay to Bay Bike MS Committee, we're ambassadors, we're activists. We've been to Sacramento in order to push forward initiatives funded by the MS Society as our trips, but things that benefit everybody, like SB 1061, that helps take the medical bills off of your credit report for all Californians. So initiatives put forth by the MS Society really benefit everybody. Multiple sclerosis means many lesions. This ends up as scar tissue because your immune system is attacking your nervous system. You would not know from looking at me that half of my face goes numb on a regular basis, that my left leg is 20% weaker than my right, and a myriad of other problems and challenges that people with MS go through. The MS Society helps us with research. We fundraise and send people to learn more about combating this disease. "MS Ends With Us" is our new tagline. Not only that, they help provide us with quality of life to keep us in our homes and in our communities and enjoying ourselves. One of my good friends got an assistance in his vehicle so that he can drive without using his legs, because he doesn't have control over them very well, so using hand controls in the car, putting wheelchair ramps in your house, getting you assistive devices. We have really big problems with temperature swings, so when it gets really hot, we have cooling vests and other devices that the MS Center, the society, provides for us, free of charge. That's where our fundraising dollars go. We have a bike ride that goes through our community, it stops at Buccaneer Park, is one of our favorite places to stop, I encourage you to volunteer and join the party. We stop at Carlsbad on our way from Irvine all the way down to San Diego over two days. Personally, I rode 100 miles last year, it's the furthest I've ever gone. Riding in... I joined this crazy bike ride with a team once and rode for three years before I even found out I had MS. So the day that I was diagnosed is usually super terrifying for somebody to find out they have a chronic disease. I actually knew what MS was already, and I already knew that there was an entire community out there working to help support us, even though there is no cure, that we don't know what causes it, it's not hopeless. Myself, along with many other ambassadors, which you could just go online, takes about 10 minutes to become an ambassador for MS, we get together and we collaborate over ideas to raise awareness and make a difference in our community. It gives us a reason, it gives us a part to keep going. I'm a project manager for a software company, so when you think about somebody who has a chronic disease and you use that word, disabled, think again, because people really have more than just what you see out of their physical abilities. So we're here to show you what is present in our community. Somebody you know may be affected with MS and may not know that there's resources out there. Also, the Vista Viking Festival, their number one nonprofit that they donate to is also the MS Society. the MS Society. We have a fundraising booth there. You also see us, including me, in a crazy Viking ship in the parade. That was me this last year. That was my first year living in Oceanside. Thank you for putting me in the float. Not you personally, but this has been such a wonderful, embracing community. Thank you for making this the first time we do the proclamation here. We just really enjoy the opportunity to do more. I know that we have an unofficial bike parade, and there's a lot of biking going on here. And if you don't know about Bike MS, you should. It's the most well-supported ride in the country. I'm on the number one most successful fundraising team, Howard's team, for all of Bike MS. So if you want to ride with the best team, talk to me personally. Totally unbiased opinion here. We have the most fun. So thank you again for helping raise awareness about multiple sclerosis. It can affect anyone at any time. I didn't find out until my 40s, and I definitely had it when I was a young person. So if something strange is happening, go to the doctor, get some questions answered, and hopefully we can make MS Ends With Us here.
Thank you, Melinda. Well, thank you. We're going to go ahead and take a picture. Let's get closer together. Thank you. Thank you for sharing your stories. Thank you for making us all aware. Thank you. Okay, next we have closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the council did a meeting in closed session today on item one, conference with labor negotiator regarding OFA and OFMA. No reportable action under the Brown Act at this time.
Thank you. Next is a consent calendar. Items two through 14. I'd like to pull number five. Is there a motion to approve the balance? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Okay, there's a motion, second.
No speakers.
Any requests to speak from the public? Okay, good. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number five is staff recommends that the city council approve a payment to KOCT Television in the amount of $75,000 to support continued community television programming operations, appropriate $75,000 from general fund unassigned reserves, and authorize the city manager to execute the payment. And I had some questions for staff. All right. So I think so it'll be Mr. Borrego who will be answering questions. I don't know how it got to the public, but I began getting requests for grants from the city, and we normally don't do grants. This was called a grant, I guess. So I thought this would be more for payment of services. I don't want to give the public the impression that we are doing grants when we actually are not doing grants. So as to this, this is actually a contract with KOCT, part of a contract with KOCT, to cover the city council meetings. Is that correct, Mr. Borrego?
Honorable Mayor and council members, yes, that is the primary function. Per the agreement that we have with KOCT is they do provide televised services for our city council meetings, as well as provide media coverage for some of our community events as well.
Right. And so we did, at last year's budget hearings, we did go ahead and do what I thought was more of an emergency kind of a year, provide $75,000, I believe it was, 75, the same amount, to KOCT, and we're back again. And what I'd like to know is, do we have a breakdown of how much it costs to do coverage of the council meetings? Do we have a breakdown and their budget on, you know, how much it costs per? Because I know that there have been, like, for example, Tri-City Medical Center used to have their meetings recorded, and now they don't. But is there a way to maybe set aside, like, how, time for them so they could start raising their own funds?
Yes, we could do that. I don't have the breakdown with me. I'm sure we can get that information from KOCT. I do know that, as I've shared with some of you, and I think it may have even been in their correspondence, it's quite likely that they're going to make a request to ask for an additional percentage of the PEG funding that they receive. At that time, I've advised them that it would be advisable to amend their agreement, which we would want to do anyway if we're going to change the percentage share. Through that process, I would expect that we would really dig into the financial details of their operation and, to your point, also provide some detailed budget information that we could share with you to help inform that decision.
Right, so the funds that are usually used, and except for these $75,000, come through our franchise agreement with Cox Cable, and the PEG, which is part of, it used to be down at this level, and then it went through the state. So it takes a trip there, and then it comes down to us. We have equipment that is outdated in the chambers. I'm talking about the speakers. I'm talking about the lights and the equipment that we have down here that sometimes some of the commissioners and ourselves can't turn the speaker on. So do we have a plan for updating the equipment? And would that all come from the PEG funds?
Yes, we do. We actually have a number of upgrades that are planned, including the lighting and sound system in the council chambers. Right now, the amount of revenue that we get from the PEG fund, which last fiscal year for 2324, the share that we received was about $22,000. I will tell you that that's not enough to cover our ongoing needs for the technology maintenance in this, and typically we actually pull from the general fund as well to help support the technology upgrades that we manage in the council chambers.
Well, I'd like to try to see if we can get, use more of those funds to be able to upgrade the chambers. I've often heard members of the public complaining that they cannot hear what is being said if they sit in parts of the chambers. I can't remember, but it seems like, yeah, it seems like several places in the chambers, the conversations either from the podium, from the public, and/or the council members when we're deliberating, they're not able to hear. And I think we really need to start working on upgrading our equipment, seeing how much that will need to be used from the PEG, and then seeing what we have left to see how we can work with KOCT so that we can give them more time, more of their time, to be able to raise their own funds, maybe approach others to other agencies to film, you know, cover their meetings and things, because I don't know that this is, this is, this needs to be more of a deliberate kind of activity.
Yes, and I will say, I've had several conversations with KOCT and its leadership. I know they are actively fundraising at all times, and their projections for revenue are up in terms of what they're anticipating next year. However, as the PEG revenue continues to go down because it is tied to the number of cable subscribers, you know, they are certainly facing some challenges, but, you know, they assure me that they're taking steps to right the ship, so to speak.
Right. And with new technology, I do think that maybe we can do things better and maybe at a lower cost so that they can go out and do... Councilmember Weiss?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Borrego. So Section 15 of the current agreement outlines the reports that KOCT is to submit to the city. Did we get one of those last October?
I don't know if we got one off, if we gotten one offhand. They actually just submitted to me a whole bunch of information. It could be in, that that's a part of it, but I don't recall offhand if they submitted one in October.
Okay, thank you. And for the, I'll move approval of staff recommendation.
Okay. I'd like to make sure that we get some work on finding out how much it costs per taping, because I did ask for that information, and I never got it. I understand it doesn't exist. So that is my concern, is that we've entered into a contract, and yet we don't seem to be able to get information about that contract in terms of the work that's being done for us. So I think we should at least add that we need to work on really getting more information from KOCT and allowing them to be able to raise money by giving them more time to do other things. So I'd like to do an amendment. Well, there's no, is there a second? Deputy Mayor Joyce?
Oh, you already seconded. I was just going to say, I'm fine with putting it through tonight with the understanding that when we come back on that PEG conversation, that we have a lot more information to move from.
Okay. Is that fine with the maker of the motion and the second? Okay. All right. Because I don't want to be here again next year, you know, in another emergency situation when we really should be able to work this through the contract. All right, Councilmember Figueroa?
Yeah, just to go off of what Councilmember Weiss said, you know, within Section 15 of the reports, some of these are to be submitted quarterly. I think when it comes back, we should have all those reports, and they should have been submitted already, and so I think everyone in the council would like to see those reports.
Right, and I think this is probably a first that we're, you know, actually requesting them, having had now the second year for additional funds. All right, there's a motion, a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 15 is staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution to reestablish the youth commission and approve the application and bylaws. And I know that we have a few members of the public here that will be speaking on this. How many do we have?
We have five members of the public on this item.
How many?
Five.
Five. Okay, great. We're beginning this with a report by Marie Towne, Library Division Manager.
Right, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Marie Towne, Library Division Manager, and the item I'm presenting on is the resolution to reestablish the youth commission. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution to reestablish the youth commission and approve the application and bylaws. The city's youth commission was originally formed on November 10, 1999. Its role at the time was to consider and make recommendations to the city council on youth-related issues in the community. It was dissolved on August 18, 2010 during a period of committee and commission consolidation and ongoing lack of quorum. While the prior commission was dissolved almost 15 years ago, the need for youth input remains an important element to informing the city's work. Oceanside youth are actively engaged in programs, employment, and internships provided by the city, serve as community volunteers, participate in extracurricular activities, and attend city events. They are poised to provide a critical perspective to city council and implement educational initiatives for youth by youth around important issues such as e-bike safety, substance use, mental health, social justice issues, and the environment. The commitment to the sustainability of the commission was demonstrated when representatives from the local high schools and the NAACP Youth Council met with city staff and presented to city council in October of last year, advocating for the reestablishment of the youth commission. Following that presentation, city council directed staff to reestablish the youth commission. The purpose of the youth commission will be to provide youth input to the city council and offer a youth perspective on the ongoing work of the city, empowering youth to engage and participate with local government, as well as providing city council members with the opportunity to hear and address youth concerns. The duties and governance structure of the commission are identified in the resolution and bylaws. The membership application and bylaws were developed by city staff after consulting with other cities with existing youth commissions and meeting with local youth to get their input. It is proposed that the commission will have nine regular voting members with two alternate members, initially as staggered appointments as some one and as some two-year terms. The commission will meet bimonthly and be supported by library staff. All commission members shall be residents of the city of Oceanside, and commission appointments are nominated by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the majority of the council. Members should be representative of the city. Commission members will be in grades nine to 12 upon appointment and are not bound to attend any particular school. Upon completion of grade 12, commissioners may finish their remaining term of appointment. The library department will provide staff support to the youth commission, its programs and any activities resulting from the commission work plan. The library Board of Trustees unanimously approved the resolution to reestablish the youth commission at its February 25, 2025 meeting. So with approval, we'd initiate the next steps. The city clerk will accept applications from high school students using the same process as the other boards and commissions. And city staff, with the help of the teens, will promote the application to high schools, including public, private, charter, and homeschool groups serving city residents. Again, city staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution to reestablish the youth commission and approve the application and its bylaws. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Got support in the House here. So we have five people who wish to speak. Please call the first.
Our first speaker is Joseph Murrow, to be followed by Annika Lugo.
Yes.
Hello and good, hello and good evening to the Honorable Oceanside City Council and members of the public. My name is Joseph Murrow. I am a lifelong Oceanside resident. I'm a senior currently attending El Communal High School, and I'm 17 years old. A few months ago, I was one of the speakers advocating for the reestablishment of the youth commission in our great city, in which it passed unanimously. Since this passage, my peers and I have been working with CJ Demento and Marie Towne at the Oceanside Library to get the youth commission started. They have been instrumental in connecting us with the city clerk and assisting us in drafting the bylaws and application you see here before you today. We, the youth, stand before you to urge you, urge you to accept the bylaws and application for the youth commission. Since beginning our work this, in early November, many of us have taken significant steps in advancing youth issues to the forefront. For example, I recently met with Congressman Mike Levent to discuss the importance of federal funding for youth education in Oceanside, led a protest against a recent immigration crackdown affecting our youth, our immigration youth, and I'm currently collaborating with a nonprofit organization to help register students to vote. This is just my story. Many of my peers are also making an impact, whether as serving as the president of the Student Demand Action of San Diego or working with the local NAACP chapter. Despite being underestimated, Oceanside's youth are here and ready to take charge on many issues that affect the next generation of Oceanside. From concerns about gentrification to e-bike safety, we are here to provide and support and give a voice to the challenges we face. The establishment of the youth commission is not symbolic, it is necessary. We are ready, we are, we have already demonstrated our ability to lead, organize, and advocate for real change in our community. Now, with a proper structure and platform, we're ready to take our involvement to the next level. Oceanside's youth are not just the future, we are the present. We are eager, capable, and committed to tackling the issues that impact our city, and we are ready to collaborate with our city leaders to create meaningful solutions. That is why we urge you to accept the bylaws and application for the youth commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Annika Lugo, followed by Karis.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Annika Lugo, and I'm a 17-year-old at Oceanside High School. I'm here tonight, among many others, to sincerely thank you for agreeing to begin the process of reestablishing the youth commission. As a young person growing up in this city, I know how important it is for youth to have a voice in our local government. For years, students like me have wanted to be heard, to share our ideas, our concerns, and our hopes for the future of Oceanside. And now, thanks to your decision, we finally have that opportunity. This commission isn't just a seat at the table. It's a message to all young people in Oceanside that our voices matter, that our leadership is valued, and that we can and should be part of shaping our community. It empowers us to take ownership of where we live and inspires us to become engaged, active citizens, not just in the future, but now. Over the past few months, I've had the privilege of working alongside others to help draft the bylaws that will define how the youth commission operates. This experience has been incredibly meaningful, not just because it allowed me to engage in local government firsthand, but because it gave me a chance to help build something that will serve and empower young people in Oceanside for years to come. I ask you tonight to adopt these bylaws, not only because they lay the foundation for a strong, organized, and impactful commission, but because they represent the voices, values, and vision of Oceanside youth. With your approval, we'll be able to take action, create programs, advise city leadership, and be a true bridge between youth of Oceanside and our local government. Thank you.
Thank you. Karis, followed by Lanay.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Sanchez, and the city and citizens of Oceanside. My name is Karis Ho, and I'm currently a senior attending El Camino High School. It's a privilege to stand before you today, representing the voices of Oceanside's youth, as I advocate for the reestablishment of the Oceanside Youth Commission. I would like to express my gratitude towards my peers and my community for giving me this opportunity, as well as to the city officials and council who have unanimously supported the preliminary reestablishment of this initiative. As a former Miss Teen Oceanside 2023 and an active member of multiple youth organizations, I have witnessed firsthand the gap between our local government and the very youth it impacts today. Our youth have ideas, concerns, and goals for our city, but lack the formal opportunity to engage in government's decision-making process. The youth commission would be able to mend this gap, allowing them to address issues like mental health, education, safety, and employment. While working alongside my peers, city officials, and CJ Demento and Marie Town at the Oceanside Library to draft the youth commission's bylaws and legislation, I witnessed firsthand its immense potential. This initiative would not only empower the youth voices, but also cultivate civic engagement, leadership, and a deeper sense of responsibility to advocate for the needs within our community. As a graduating senior passionate about advocacy and community outreach, I strive to positively influence those around me. My experiences as an intern with Congressmember Mike Levin, as well as an intern at the North County District Attorney's Office, have strengthened my commitment to pursuing a career in law and public. These opportunities have encouraged my passion for creating meaningful change, and I believe that the Oceanside Youth Commission will provide the next generation with a similar platform to explore their interests, offer feedback, and positively influence the important issues we face. By reinventing the Oceanside Youth Commission, we are not just giving our youth an opportunity to empower their voice, we are investing in the future of Oceanside. The youth is excited and ready to create new ideas and influence local policies, promoting inclusivity and a culture of community engagement that will continue to benefit the city for years to come. I urge you to support and accept the bylaws to reestablish the Oceanside Youth Commission and join us, the youth, in empowering the voices of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, council members, and everybody that is here tonight. My name is Lanay Branch, and I'm standing here not just as a student, but as somebody who has put in the work to make Oceanside's youth have a real voice in this city. A few months ago, I stood before you, and I made the case for why a youth commission wasn't just a good idea, it was necessary. Because of the overwhelming support from both young people and this council, we made it happen on October 9th. The bylaws and the constitution we're presenting isn't just technicalities, they set the foundation for what the commission can and will accomplish. They make sure that we have structure, accountability, and of course, a clear purpose. This isn't just about creating a symbolic group that fades in a year, it's ensuring that Oceanside youth always have a seat at the table, no matter who's in office or what issues come up. I know that there has been concerns about whether young people will step up, whether we'll follow through, and whether this will actually make an impact. But I think my presence here and the presence of so many other engaged young leaders proves that we are serious. I've spent years organizing, presenting proposals, and advocating for change in this city, and I'm not the only one. There are students ready to serve, ready to engage, and ready to bring fresh perspectives to issues that impact us all. I want to thank you for believing in this commission and by helping us to get to this point. Now, I ask you that you support this next level by approving the bylaws and the constitution so that we can make this commission real, functioning, and lasting. We've come too far to stop now. Let's get this done. Thank you.
Last speaker is Mr. Knott, Jimmy Knott.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherry Lane, and a senior citizen. I support the reestablishment of the youth commission. It's about 15 years of lost strength that we have lost here in Oceanside by the city council here in Oceanside since August 18th, 2010. Fifteen lost years. And what is happening today is really, really important. Just today, think about it, the Department of Education here in the United States of America is canceling food lunch programs, breakfast programs, mental health care for youth, physical health care for youth, transportation for youth, and LGBT plus issues, disabled care, on and on. One of the four primary goals and primary core elements of Oceanside is to respect and support diversity. Our federal government is working against our city and that key goal. This is where the youth are gonna have to step up. They're gonna have to come up with ideas and advocate for replacements to take and fill in those gaps as our federal government cuts away at the hearts of our citizens. Parents are gonna have to send their kids home without something to eat in the morning. This is where the youth are gonna have to figure out where are their, you know, friends and neighbors going to get that lunch, that breakfast. This is where you can empower those youth. As a senior citizen, we are having similar programs with Social Security and senior services. And that same date, August 18th, 2010, our throats were cut too. And we have 15 years of lost capability and strength as well. Please resurrect our senior commission before we die. Thank you.
Thank you. No other speakers? Okay. Did staff want to say anything else about this? Mr. Demento, thank you very much for having the library be the advisor. Thank you so much. To the council, Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. Just a couple things on the, first of all, I support the measure and glad you're all here and support it. Just on membership, the first, I'm a little concerned about how, Mayor, I know how strong you are for Oside High, and what I don't want is a youth commission with nothing but pirates on it, no offense, pirates. I just want to make sure, and I don't know that we can codify it in any way or put it in here, but that we really go out and reach out to all the different schools and we, that that's your task, is to make sure that all the, all the high schools, all the, all the students in this city have an opportunity and are encouraged to be part of it. You know, I know the mayor's really proud of Oside High, so if there's applicants, she might just lean that way a little bit, but, and I'm tongue-in-cheek mayor, I'm just kind of kidding. But we definitely want to have all our schools represented, so when we, when we do vote and select our members, we can proudly say you've represented all the youth in the city. So I just, I throw that out there. And the other thing I just wanted to talk about, under Article 7, under committees, it talks about ad hoc committees, which I'm all fine with, and the city manager will approve ad hocs. There's no mention of standing, so can I assume from this that there will never be a standing committee, or it would have to come to council to approve a standing committee? I, I think there's a problem when our, our commissions can do these standing committees without some oversight.
Yes, and thank you. And I would agree, based on the way that the bylaws are written, that would not be allowed because the commissions and committees that do provide for standing committee, standing committees, it is spelled out in their bylaws, so I would interpret this to mean that's not an option for this commission or committee. And, and I share your concerns, as you know, about standing committees and the amount of extra staff commitment associated with staffing those.
Okay, I just want to get it on, add on the record. With that, I, I will move the, the motion.
All right, thank you. Oh, by the way, just to respond, when I attended OHS, we are the best, there were two campuses, so 910th, I was at the OHS campus, 1112th, we called it East Campus, so I actually graduated from what later became El Camino High School. So I'm actually part of both high schools, so here we go. But yes, OHS, we are the best. Yeah, so thank you very much. Councilmember Figueroa?
I want to commend all of you for coming here to speak. The first time I came to city council, I was super nervous. I used to run Project Reach Libby Lake, the after-school program down in the Libby Lake area, and we came with a group of, of students from the center, and I think I was more nervous than them to come up and, come up here and speak. So just seeing all of you up here and advocating for something that you believe in so much, I, I think it's just truly amazing. Moving forward, one of the things that I, I shared with our city manager and I wanted to share to the library staff is just hearing a little bit of feedback from the youth commission in San Diego, talking to some former commissioners there, and some of the challenges that they encountered in the beginning, and I just, I want to share this with the staff, was that they felt like they could have received more support from the city staff once the commission was up and running, with just Robert's Rules of Order, conducting a meeting, how to move things forward. I think that you've helped these amazing group of young advocates, you know, reach almost to the finish line, they're here, right? But the work's just getting started, and I think they're still gonna continue to need the support from the staff, and I, I just think this is amazing, so I'm, I'm a big supporter. I wasn't here when this moved along, so I'm not gonna second, I want, want someone else to second it. But I went to El Camino High School for a bit, Pacific U, Pacific U Charter School for a bit, but then ended up graduating from the Mariccos Community Learning Center, so I'm sure we'll have representation from everywhere, yeah.
Deputy Mayor?
All right. So this is a really important day. It's exciting, it's great to see you all back. I am thrilled to support, I, was there a second? If there's not a second, I will happily second the motion. So as council members and community leaders, a lot of times we have to lead and we have to, we have to pick up a, pick up an issue or pick up a topic and run with it and really knock on doors. And this is one of those wonderful situations where all we had to do is get out of the way because you all were ready to do it. And that's so cool. When you do become a commission and when you do sit in these seats, I would encourage you to continue to find that source of voice that you have now. Don't lose it when you're up here and the lights get bright. Make sure you keep pushing. We want to hear what you have to say. There's a reason that we're, we're behind this commission because your voice is needed in this space. The decisions that the council makes are really impactful for, especially for the generations that come after us. A lot of the work that we do, we start and then it's, it's not 10 years until the project comes, comes to fruition, and it really, what we do impacts multiple generations behind us. So the fact that you're gonna be in these spaces, that you're gonna be plugged into what the council is doing, providing feedback, and really being an active part of the conversation is gonna make every single one of those decisions better. I'm convinced of it. So thank you so much for stepping up, know that we have your back. We'll keep these seats warm for you so that, you know, when you're ready to come back and take them yourselves, you'll be ready to go. So congratulations, great work.
I want to, I want to thank you so much for your persistence. I know you, the first thing you heard was, no, we're not gonna do another commission, right? And you did not accept that. Lanay, thank you so much for your leadership, for all of you, for your leadership. Some of you are with the, with the mock trial, moot court. I got to see that, see you in action, you guys are fantastic, you rock. You have a wonderful vision. It's a nine-member, is what I understand, with possibly two alternates, I think. So basically, the rule is that this will be a Brown, a Brown Act commission, so a majority cannot at any time meet at the same, outside of a meeting to talk about a certain item that's coming up. Okay? So this does not stop you from meeting and talking about, hey, what do we want to talk about, what do we want to get done? You are free to do that. Just mind the, the Brown Act rules and I'm just, I'm just delighted to see you guys just lead and, and just do it. I'm just so, so happy, so happy for you guys. So thank you very much again, and I look forward to, to, I don't know who's gonna be your liaison, but whoever it is, I'm gonna be coming to your meetings anyway. So thank you very much. There is a motion and a second.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you. We are on item number 16. This is a public hearing items, and that is staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving a plan of finance, including the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $65 million, to finance and refinance the acquisition, construction, development, and equipping, equipping, yeah, of a 179-unit qualified residential rental project to be located at 712 Seagate Drive for the benefit of 716 Seagate Affordable LP, a California Limited Partnership or an affiliate, and certain other matters relating thereto. Long title for the item. So I'm gonna go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and our correspondence.
Staff and, when we had the public hearing, obviously the applicant and the public.
Staff, same, and a couple of public emails.
Staff and public, as well as having gone through two public hearings on this matter.
Staff in relation to tonight's item and then the previous correspondence.
Staff only.
Thank you. Mr. Varo, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
Oh, the only correspondence we received was forwarded to council prior to the meeting.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and begin testimony with Lady Lonnie Hines, the, the Director for Housing and Neighborhood Services. Ms. Hines?
Good evening, Madam-
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers. Tonight, we are bringing forward to you the Seagate Affordable Housing Project. The California Municipal Finance Authority has requested to be the issuer of tax-exempt bonds to finance a proposed 179-unit affordable rental housing development. As your previous comments alluded to, it is a little bit of a mouthful, but tonight we are here to hold a public hearing and then for council to consider adoption of a resolution approving the financing plan and the issuance of these bonds up to a principal amount of $65 million to finance the residential rental development. Such adoption of this resolution, I just want to make clear, is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of IRS Code Section 147 Subsection F, which requires that applicable elected representatives of the governmental unit hosting the development must provide its approval of the issuance of the bonds for its financing. So just a little bit about the project. The project is located at 712 716 Seagate Drive, at the northwest corner of North Nevada Street and Seagate Drive. It is a rental housing development that will provide 179 affordable units in the city of Oceanside. All the units are studio apartments. They'll range in terms of mixed income, mixed affordability, anywhere from 30% to 60% of the area median income for the San Diego region. Will have 45 units that will be dedicated for extremely low-income households at 30% AMI, so for one person, that's about almost $32,000 a year. Forty-three units will be reserved for very low-income residents at 50% AMI, which is just above $53,000 a year, and then 89 units for low income at 60% of AMI, around $70,000 a year. So the major... Forty-nine percent of the units are really for that extremely low and very low-income category that are more difficult to serve and deeper affordability targeting. So housing is a very expensive endeavor nowadays. The total cost for this project is just over $96 million. Fifty-three percent of the financing will come from the already awarded bonds and tax credits from the state. Thirty-nine percent will come from what we call the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Program. And so the majority of the financing is coming from these two different financing sources. CMFA will do the... Is asking for the maximum of $65 million in tax-exempt revenue bonds. And again, highlighting that multifamily housing bond program is a self-supporting program with the borrower, the property owner, they are completely responsible for payments of all costs of issuance and other costs of the notes. That includes the financing, bond counsel, all legal councils, financial advisors, and this will not constitute a debt of the city or CMFA or financially obligate either of those parties for the security of repayment on the notes. It's really reliant on these private sources for development. And neither the faith or credit or the taxing power of the city or the housing authority is being pledged for the payment of these notes. So that's important to remember. And then that really concludes staff's report. We're here again recommending that we hold the public hearing, accept public testimony, and then council consider the adoption of the resolution that's before you this evening. I do want to point out that we have Brian Elsley, the applicant here, as well, and Lily and Doherty from North County Transit District that can answer any specific questions, as well as a representative from CMFA who will be the bond issuer and who can handle questions related to the bond financing. With that, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. So the applicant then has an opportunity to speak for up to 20 minutes.
Thank you, Lady Lani. Yeah. My name's Brian Elsley, and I'm the developer. And again, I just want to be brief. We really would appreciate your support for this affordable housing project. Blew out here to answer any questions that you guys might have. As Lady Lani said, Travis is here, the bond form, and Lily is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This is a public hearing. This is a time for the public to speak on this item and provide their comments to the council. You do not have to have signed up to speak. Do we have anyone that did?
We did. Jimmy Knott.
Okay, thank you. After Mr. Knott, I will ask if anyone wishes to speak on this. They can rise, approach the podium, state their name, and then speak for up to three minutes. Thank you. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherre Lane. As with any development in our city, I think that we're getting the cart before the horse. And the reason why is, number one, that has been expressed to me throughout the entire city, is parking. And what we need to do is start thinking outside of the box. And I have something I have been stressing for about the last 20 years, and I think it's time for us to seriously look at it because other communities are looking at it and implementing it. And that is separate parking structures. And then that... What happens is, is that you have different developers coming together, contributing to a fund to develop parking structures exclusively for their developments, and if there is any excess, then renting out the excess. The other side of the coin is, including into the CCNRs, with the people who live in those developments, to have a contract between the individuals and the developers and the management, that they will live and they will transport themselves only by public transit, and their visitors as well, or that they will use remote locations to park. Now, this would relieve a lot of the different stress within the community and impacting on the adjacent streets where a lot of the complaints come from. Next thing that comes up that is really something which is, I hate to say, a curse of our time, is 30% of the income is under threat. Because a lot of that is underneath federal additional Section 8 consideration. And the federal government is already talking up on the federal level, very simply discontinuing Section 8 support, and we have no alternate support mechanism. So those people who are in extremely low income would be left out in the cold. We need to take and have ulterior... Excuse me. Alternate measures to give those people help or some way to help them support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Come on up, state your name, and then you have up to three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Richard Bobell. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at this, and I, as I know, the mayor has heard me speak before on affordable housing is a priority for the city of Oceanside, and I am pleased to see that there is an effort being made to supply affordable housing in our city. We must constantly be doing that. I was unaware of this project, but one of the concerns that I had pop up in my head was that's 179 studio units. And that's great if you're a single person or maybe even a couple, but it concerns me that we have to allow affordable housing for people with children. Small children need a bedroom. They need a quiet place to get a good night's rest. You're not going to be good in school. You're not going to be able to concentrate. It's part of their overall lifetime of good health starts as children, and they need some quiet space during that time. I hate to see something like this where we're going to allow single parents move in with small children, and they might be up working late or doing something, maybe studying to improve their educational things, and these children don't have a place for rest and recuperation for their next day. So I hope that as we're looking at the overall city affordable housing, that we're managing... That we are prioritizing and looking for places where children can be housed appropriately and have a quiet space of their own to get that rest much needed for their development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? State your name, please, and...
Can I use this one or that one?
Either one, they're both hot.
Sounds great. I did not sign up for this. My name is Bryant Rumbah. And full disclosure, I'm not a resident of Oceanside, and I am not a lobbyist either. I'm just a concerned American. But, you know, really, you know, as I've gone around and seen and learned about affordable housing, I was trying to look, is this subsidized housing, may I ask?
It is not.
This is not. Okay, okay. Because, you know, I just... I'm always looking at the big picture, what the gentleman right before said about the children. That definitely very good points. And, you know, when I look at the problems that we have as a society, homelessness is certainly an issue. We got to combat these things. We got to be creative in it. But you answered my question about it being subsidized because I'm a free-market guy. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? No? I see no one else rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing, and I don't believe there were any questions that were asked. So I'll go back to staff, and if staff has no other comments. I did have a question. What is the limit of people per room? These are studios, efficiency.
Sure. So for this city, because we're not participating in this project financially, we don't have an occupancy limit on the project. Typically, the micro-units typically, because of their size, have one to two bedrooms. I'll let you know just for comparison, with project-based vouchering where we do participate, we look at minimums and maximums, and this type of a unit would range between one or two persons. But I'll let the applicant speak if they have any specific occupancy standards.
Do you have any occupancy standards?
Mayor Sanchez, so with the... To qualify, it can be one to two is for the... With the income qualification or the rates that we're putting on A.
Okay, thank you.
Only...
To the council, councilmember Weiss.
Yeah, I have a question for the applicant.
Sorry about that.
Well, first off, Mr. Barago, the project's already been approved. All we're approving with this is the financing.
Right.
That is correct.
Thank you. One of the slides showed that the cost per unit is about $500,000. Is that... What is the... Your estimated cost to actually build each unit?
The hard cost?
Yeah.
We've bid it out, and I think we're... I mean, a lot of that soft cost is included in that. I think we're at like $45 million right now.
Okay.
On our hard cost. But a big portion of that's interest expense, all the other fees, yeah.
Thank you.
It's about half.
I'll move approval, staff recommendation.
All right. Deputy Mayor Joyce.
I'll second. I was just going to... Because it was brought up, are we looking at multi-bedrooms and others? There are lots of projects that are in the queue that have multi-bedrooms for families, so this is part of my diverse affordable housing system that we're attempting to build out, even though we're not participating particularly in this one. I would just put a plug in that 45 units at extremely low income is a big deal. It's hard to get those built. Do you know how many? I know, put yours by... It's not many that we've done this cycle.
No, not typically. When you get to the 30% AMI, that's homeless or near homeless, at risk of homelessness. So those are your folks that aren't even making minimum wage, maybe your senior citizens on social security. So it's really vulnerable population groups.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was that a... That was a second, okay. My comments. At the first hearing that we had on this was at the time that we approved the project, basically, and it went through on a 3-2. I did vote against it. I still am concerned about the parking. It is underparked. There are 149 parking spots, 30 short, and I don't know what we're going to do. Those 30... Everyone basically has a car in Oceanside. We are not a metropolitan area where we have a lot of really good public transportation. So that is my concern. This is a first, kind of a single-residence occupancy that we have, and to have it all in one building with no mix of family, you know, family units, does bother me a bit. I have to say that when I heard, I believe it was in December, it could have been November, when I was contacted about the $48.7 million grant that was made by the California Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities, I didn't know what they were talking about. And I was contacted by a couple of reporters. There was just... And I tried getting ahold of staff, the city manager, the director for the housing, and nobody had any information about this, about that. So apparently, that application went forward without any communications with the city. That kind of bothered me, that I had nothing to say to the reporters because we were just completely left out of the loop. 282 square foot, up to 300 square foot, that's really small. I lived in an efficiency while I was going to law school, probably about this size, very, very difficult to live in for more than the time I had to be there for school. I wish we could have had a better project. So no other comments, please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. All right. Communications from the public regarding items not on this agenda, item number 17. How many folks do we have?
We have seven speakers.
Okay, let's get started.
Our first speaker is Amit Duleshia, to be followed by Leslie Davies.
My name is Leslie Davies, and I live in Oceanside. My zip code is 92054. And I'm here tonight to speak about rumors of the rodeo having some interest in coming to our beautiful new arena. We understand that rodeos have a cultural aspect to them, but there are several events which are extremely cruel and very harmful to the animals. Calf roping, team roping, and steer wrestling. Los Angeles and the city of San Diego are in the process of banning these very inhumane events. San Diego Humane Society has come out in support of also imposing a ban. I am here tonight hoping Oceanside will follow these cities and take San Diego Humane's recommendation and pass an ordinance banning these horrific events. These events are extremely cruel and often result in great harm and suffering to the animals. Thank you so much for your consideration. On an unrelated topic, I watch these city council meetings from home, and there are some times when I think certain city council members are extremely rude to our mayor, and I think it's very unprofessional. Thank you.
Thank you.[1758.26][1758.26](Applause). Abriant Rumbah? Oh, I'm sorry. Is this Amit? Amit? Are you Amit?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
(Inaudible)
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 Yeah, thank you. My name is Amit Duleshia. I am here to ask the city council to pass an ordinance to ban certain cruel activities in rodeos. I'm gonna play a video for you on my phone. These videos are from San Diego City. Two are from the Padres rodeo that happened. Two of the animals in these videos, two of the horses are dead. Recently, a horse was forced to, an eight-month-old pregnant horse was forced to perform at the Padres rodeo in January of this year. After the rodeo, at 15 minutes after the rodeo, the horse passed away, died. And then the baby that was obviously with the horse also passed away. So I'm gonna play the video for you. So thank you so much.
Have just announced that despite killing a horse and covering it up, they are bringing this cruel spectacle back to Petco Park in 2025. Investigators from the Animal Protection and Rescue League documented routine and extreme cruelty at each event of the Padres 2024 rodeo. This event is called team roping. It begins with a gate opening. Then you see a grown man physically force a scared baby calf out of a chute. The baby calf is then chased by two men on horseback. One man lassoes the baby calf's head. The other man lassoes the baby calf's back leg. The scared baby calf is then pulled in two different directions to a sudden halt by the men on horseback. The result is an injured baby calf every time. Run after run, the chute opens. A grown man physically forces the calf into the arena. It's lassoed, it's drawn, it's pulled, and injured. Every time. San Diego, we can do better. We have to do better. San Diego elected officials and the San Diego Padres are responsible for bringing this cruelty to our city. And they are now planning to bring it back again next year. APRL and our friends at Showing Animals Respect and Kindness, or SHARC, will continue to expose the cruelty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bryant Rumbaugh, followed by Michaela Ramirez.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was painful to watch. Still Bryant Rumbaugh. So as I actually came, coming to our, your Oceanside City Council here, making a left-hand turn onto Coast Highway from 76, you know, what caught my eye was still in a palm tree, a, a political campaign sign. I was, I want to say it read Trump, Security, Kamala, Crime, what I believe it said. I, I just want to let you guys know that that is still there. You know, I, I personally have a little bit of a disdain for political signs, especially we're now going on five months past the election. You know, I'm not a red guy, blue guy. I kind of, you know, I'm, I'm not exactly easy to be put in a box. I'm sure that as you guys have been elected and declared your candidacy for your elected offices, you know, you got a lot of votes for the, the D or the R that was next to your names. That's, that's, well, I mean, whether you knew it or not, bro, I'm telling you, that's the way it is. That's, that's about the, the level of engagement that we have in the society. That's what all those young people were talking about accountability. We're talking about, they deserve a better future. You know, as, as far as the other gentleman, which I still love this man's hat, it was super cool. You know, I, I have, I do have a problem with, you know, well, you know, I'm, I, I went to public school in, in America. Okay? So I, I, my level of indoctrination education is probably aligned with, with what a lot of us understand. You know, I, I'm, I'm actually not into the whole federal government because to be quite honest with you, the federal government is actually the foreign government. Okay? You know, last night I spoke at San, San Marcos, and they had their organizational structure for their, their 2025 goals. And one of them was fiscal responsibility. Okay? We've been spending money like it's going out of style just printing it. The federal government has. That, that's how we operate. That's how we have. You know, I saw a text, not a text, a, what do you call it? A tweet in one of those social media things. I'm not a big social media guy. But Thomas Massey, who's a congressman out of Kentucky, he's in a little bit of a riff now with President Trump because not continuing this, continuing resolution for our debt ceiling in America. And he actually, for his campaign, in the last 36 hours, he, he, he pretty much generated $175,000 apparently. You know, what, what I'm here to tell everybody that money runs the show. America needs to do better. Taking the money out of the politics is how we do it. I have the answer.
Thank you. Michaela Ramirez, followed by Lotus Bernquist.
Thank you, city council members, Mayor Sanchez and Deputy Mayor Eric Joyce for allowing me this opportunity to speak for, about dispensaries within the city of Oceanside. If it's possible, those who lived here in Oceanside since 1980, can they raise their hands? Okay. How about those who have been here since 1990? All right. Well, thank you for participating in my question. As a community member, mother, teacher, and advocate, youth advocate, and first-generation citizen, I've lived in North County since I was born, 1980. My father was in the military, and though we moved often, this always was a place of home. Growing up, Oceanside was not always safe. Downtown was dangerous place, especially for children and women. Hill Street, what we know as PCH, was infamous for prostitution, human trafficking, gain, sexual result, sorry, I'm a little nervous, sexual assaults and rampant drug use. Some of our older residents remember the hardships of Hill Street days. And some of our youth today carry the weight of generational abuse with incredibly high ACE scores. If the city has been an advocate for youth sobriety, investing in sports facilities, parks programs, and a rich life, which this progress is invaluable, I ask, we live in a city that often rushes children into adulthood, exposing them to mixed messages. If dispensaries are introduced, I urge the city to make them holistic medical facilities, focus on healing rather than recreation. Medical cannabis follows strict regulations and serves a clear purpose, benefiting those who cannot take pharmaceuticals due to conditions like celiac disease or chronic illness. Cannabis recreational use, however, turns cannabis into a social indulgence. I urge the city to be extremely mindful of where dispensaries are placed, considering beginning only with one, if at all. We need to ensure that any dispensaries reflect Oceanside's value, protecting our children and preserving the progress we've made as a city. Our communities, especially our Latino Brown communities, already face racial profiling. We cannot allow dispensaries to become another tool for unfair targeting. Let's continue to transform Oceanside into a society where all people, especially our youth, can thrive, where families can safely walk together, where women and children feel secure, and where a strong sense of community thrives. Let's move forward with historic wisdom, not forgetting the past and serving our community with integrity. Lastly, a question to the city. I would like to know, how does the city see dispensaries? And how does this mold a better future for our youth? How does this, the youth commission feel about dispensaries in the city? I just asked them and they're pissed. And has the city done research on other cities in the United States, such as Portland, Colorado, Seattle? And that have now bigger problems with the youth drugs, homelessness, and a drop of graduation, graduates after dispensaries have been introduced recreationally? Thank you.
Thank you. Lotus Bernquist, followed by Brent Garren.
Evening, city council members, mayor, deputy mayor. I'm here today as an advocate for the youth in our community. Oceanside has come a very long way since I was a kid. And I remember it not always being a safe place to come growing up, sadly, because I love Oceanside very much. That's why we created our What's Your Superpower event, which is for youth sobriety, to empower young people with positive outlets and a vision for the future. With the recent decision to expand the number of dispensaries in Oceanside, I have to ask what message we are sending to the youth? Is this the pathway the city is taking? How do we ensure the youth are still supported in making healthy choices? If the focus is truly on medicinal use, then let's also invest in education, prevention, mentorship programs, and events that help young people find their strengths beyond substances. How can we uplift and support our youth in a way that aligns with the city's vision while ensuring they have the guidance, resources, and opportunities to make healthy choices for their future? I urge the council to consider ways to support youth initiatives along this expansion. Let's make sure Oceanside continues to grow in a way that uplifts both businesses and its young people that are included. Thank you.
Thank you. Brent Garren.
Mayor, councilman, I just wanted to give a quick kudos. Where my wife and I and daughter are creating a wellness spa and starting a small business. We're going through the permit process here in the city of Oceanside. And difficult, any time you have to go through permitting is difficult. But Oceanside's been very compassionate towards us and allowing us to ask lots of questions, get lots of feedback. Even one of the firemen was on vacation or out of town. He was assigned to our land. Another fireman offered to look at him and approve him. So kept us moving forward. We just appreciate all the help and are happy to start a new business. You know, yeah. Thank you.
And that's at, on Oceanside Boulevard near the I-5. Is that right?
Oceanside Boulevard near the I-5, right next to the French.
And when do you think you'll be opening?
Hopefully next month. You got it. We're pushing hard.
Fantastic. Congratulations. Thank you. Jimmy Knott.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Cherry Lane. I'll speak a little bit from my heart tonight. And that is, is that, first off, thank you, Councilmember Joyce. I mean, Deputy Mayor Joyce for going back east and representing the city. And your entourage as well. What I would love to hear is a report back, you know, to tell the public what's going on and tell us the truth about what is going on. The second thing is, is that I went to Ash Wednesday service here at St. Margaret's. And the minister, the priest up there, had, you know, they dispensed the ashes. And they said very simply, repent and remember the gospel. The gospel is translated the good news. And that was something that really touched me in the sense of how does that apply to the city of Oceanside? Do we, what does repent mean to the city of Oceanside? We have to reflect on what we've done wrong or how we've missed the mark. Because sin is a game where they would throw something at a target. Anything away from the sinner is missing the mark, and that was called the sin. And so how has Oceanside missed that mark? How was, how we've really created sin? And there's a lot of areas. Parking, homelessness. You know, are we really treating our neighbor that really needs to be helped? And then there's the good news. And the good news of the gospel is how many people help one another in our community. And this is something that we really have to inculcate into our government is how do we facilitate that? How can we bring that forward? How can we entrust that? How can we empower that? You gave the example tonight, a little bit of that with the youth commission. Let's step forward and maybe just a little bit beyond that with the senior commission, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, Steve Barrow.
Mayor Sanchez, council member. Steve Barrow, Oceanside. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the Age Friendly Cities program. We've been having listening sessions. We've got two more. And that's great. The energy in the room is terrific, and people are really coming out to participate. And I think they appreciate the opportunity to do that. Just to comment, I have to say, I think we're gonna see a lot more of people, community engagement. We're seeing it already, and we'll all be the better for it, this community will. I think it's exciting. Not always for the reasons we'd like to see, you know, quite frankly, given what's going on politically in this country at this point. But it is a democracy, and we need to keep that in mind and keep an open system here locally to hear people's voices. And I think we're doing that, and I want to thank you for that. You know, one of the things that's come up that I am personally interested in is emergency preparedness. So I want to see us doing some things now. We don't need to wait till December when we have our action plan. We can do more now. And I personally will try to work with people here in this room to see that that happens, particularly for the senior community and the people who are left out because of language sometimes, in other circumstances, the Hispanic community, and the mobile home community. We need to make an extra effort to see that those groups particularly know what to do and are better prepared than they are. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for the comments on items not on the agenda. Next is item 18. This is a council member item with Deputy Mayor Joyce. And this is a request from us to change the standard review of appeals to the city council from the planning commission, from planning commission decisions, which is, this is the way that we used to do it back in the day. What I'd like to see is that when a council member or member of the public appeals a planning commission decision to the city council, the council shall be able to review the decision de novo and not be limited to the specific points raised in the appeal. The council should be able to review the entire record of the appeal direction to staff. Did you want to make some comments?
Just very briefly, I mean, you said most of it. It's just, having been in this role now, when we get appeals, it is incredibly frustrating because the members of the public expect us to be able to review the project in its entirety. And then we, we have a very narrow scope of what we are able to even ask questions about. So I would appreciate this moving forward and, and learning more about what this means for future appeals. And, and that's it. Thanks for bringing it forward.
I did look into this, and most cities do it this way. And I believe there was a base, a reason was to maybe make it easier for the council to zero in on what points were being raised. But sometimes, I mean, you've got, usually, usually it's the developer on the one side that has attorneys and then the members of the public that don't tend to have attorneys. And so they're trying to figure out what, what are the relevant points to be brought up? So, and I think at the, at the dais, we, we have the opportunity to ask questions of our city attorney and city manager. So, Councilmember Robinson? Sorry? Is there a, I apologize. So was that a second? Okay. There's a motion and second. Who, how many people wish to speak on this item?
We have three speakers on this item.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Jimmy Knott, to be followed by Kalen Frank, to be followed by Meg Le.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott. One question I have. One question I have for you and one request right off. When I was receiving a couple telephone calls, when you use legal speak like the term de novo, can you please define it for the public? There was a little bit of confusion, and I had to spend some time on the phone describing what de novo, you know, is that a star in the sky or what is it? So this is something that if you can help out, that would...
A new.
I know, I know. So I want to put in that request to you that, for the sake of clarity to the public, if it would help out. The second thing is that I agree with you. You know, you are supposed to be, all of you, the representatives of the public. You have a duty, whether you're a conservative or liberal, whether you're Democrat or Republican, or whether you're somewhere in between, or whatever, you have a responsibility to represent the public. And councils change over the years. I've seen it back and forth, back and forth over the years, as you have seen. And this is where, you know, it can be dominant on one side, and once, you know, for four years, it can switch back. And different ideas can be accentuated and then diminished. But the thing is, each of you have that responsibility to represent the public. And this is where I think that this is a very good step to opening up the process to represent the people, and I really support it, and that you will be empowered to tell the people of the city, we heard you. Thank you.
Thank you. Kalen Frank, followed by Meg Lay.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Kalen Frank, and I'm here representing the Building Industry Association of San Diego County. As the region's leading voice of residential development for more than 85 years, the BIA advocates for housing at all levels and the people and families who need the place to call home. We strongly oppose this proposal to allow planning commission appeals to be heard de novo. The planning commission already conducts thorough reviews, ensuring projects align with the city's vision and zoning laws. Allowing appeals to restart the process from scratch creates avoidable delays, adds uncertainty, and discourages investment in much-needing housing. More importantly, we believe that this proposal would violate Oceanside's state-mandated housing element by creating new barriers to housing production. The housing element commits the city to streamlining approvals and reducing unnecessary obstacles. This policy does the opposite. If the city moves forward with this change, we believe the California Department of Housing and Community Development will take enforcement action, as they have before, against other noncompliant jurisdictions. Oceanside, like the rest of our region, faces a housing crisis. Every delay increases costs, pushing home prices and rents even higher for working families. Instead of adding more red tape, we should be streamlining approvals to support responsible growth. We urge you to uphold the integrity of the planning commission's decisions and reject this change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Meg Lay.
Hello. I just wanted to say that I'm in support of item 18. It gives you guys the ability to review everything in full from the planning commission appeals. The current problem is, is that you can't consider everything right now, and I think that that's really unfortunate, because the reality is that the average citizen does not have the time, resources, or expertise to actually go through every page of the EIR to make sure it's okay. And with the planning commission, I think that sometimes they drop the ball here and there, and so then for the average citizen, we rely on you guys to make sure no balls are dropped. And so I do support that. The solution is to give you guys full access, just like the commission does. And bottom line is, is that stronger oversight leads to better decisions, better projects, and better outcomes for Oceanside. So please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is it. There was a question about what de novo means. So Mr. Burke?
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. De novo is a legal term of art. It does mean anew in Latin. Our current appeals process does provide for de novo review, but it's cabined by the scope of the appeal, the issues that are raised in the appeal. De novo is the legal standard of review, meaning you don't have to give weight or deference to the underlying decision. As proposed, as I understand it, the de novo, it's the same standard, meaning there's no weight or deference, but what we're talking about here, the proposal from council, you know, at this point, is to remove that barrier in terms of the scope of appeal, meaning the council itself is not cabined by the specific issues that are raised and can take up the entire record from the planning commission.
Thank you, and as I understand it, most cities do have and exercise the authority of a de novo hearing that is not limited to the specific points raised in the appeal.
So we're conducting a survey of that as part of this process. To some extent, that is true, but it is also true that all those, most of those cities still also require the appellant to set forth some version of a concise statement or otherwise, laying out the issues on appeal, because there are some due process issues that are tied in there. So, well, the board, the council itself, may have a broader authority. I don't know that the recommendation is going to be to, you know, fully remove from the appellant's the obligation to set forth some argument or basis on which the appeal should be heard.
So basically, a city council does not have to have a planning commission. City councils can actually hear the items without a planning commission. The idea of a planning commission is to make it so that there can be, a city of our size, so that we can actually timely hear of proposals for development. But there is nothing in the law that would limit the council from basically changing this to what it was before. So, Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. When you say, mayor, what it was before, can any staff member tell us when it was different than what it is today?
I don't know.
Well, you...
I was around in 2000. That's how we were doing it.
Different, you were doing it different?
De novo, yeah.
In when?
In 2000, 2001. There were actually, it was actually a two-step. One, the first step was whether or not there was a desire by the council to hold an appeal, to hear an appeal, and then the actual appeal itself.
Okay, but when they appealed, did they not have to come with, did you go beyond the elements of the appeal?
Yes. And I did do surveys of the other cities.
Is there any staff that was here back then that could confirm that? Huh? Wow, I guess not. Okay.
Well, actually, I mean, that is kind of a minor point. The point is that this is...
So 25, no, it's not.
This is something that most cities do in the state of California.
Okay, well, that's your opinion. I haven't heard that. When you say most cities, I don't know that that's true. Regardless, I think we've been doing it a certain way for a number of years. I think to just take, to just allow council to not have any boundaries, I think that will cause delays. I agree with our speaker from the BIA, because right now, the way it works is, the appeal comes forward, staff has, if I'm wrong here, somebody correct me, staff has a chance to go through the elements of the appeal, prepare responses to those things so that we have that information. If we're sitting up here going all around those elements, staff may or may not have answers to those things. It may take time. It could delay the project even more. So that's one reason that I disagree with this. And then in your language, it's very specific. You say, when a council member or member of the public appeals a planning commission, would you apply the same rule if a developer appeals a planning commission decision?
Yeah.
So you're okay then if a developer gets the, the, the...
Yeah.
Planning commission, and they come back and they say...
Yeah. Whoever appeals it.
Whoever appeals it.
Yep.
Just open it up.
A de novo hearing, yes.
I just...
Councilmember Weiss.
I have a question for staff. So in this situation, at the planning commission, people are going to stand up and raise whatever the issue is, traffic, air quality, biology. Currently, staff would, after the planning commission hearings, supposing the planning commission approves the project and there's an appeal filed, they would address those specific things. Under this, staff wouldn't have to address anything. They would just repackage the planning commission staff report, forward it to us, so it could actually streamline the process and get it to council faster, since you don't have to address any of the issues raised at the planning commission hearing.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and council members, I will say that in my discussions with staff, that is our thought, that in reality, it could actually make our job a lot easier, because I will say, oftentimes, we receive appeals that have 10 or 15 points of appeal, and we have to do an exhaustive analysis of each one of those 10 or 15 points of appeal post-planning commission hearing, and it takes a lot of time. I will say, in my mind, it would actually streamline the process if, to your point, we were simply restating, of course, we would mention the points of appeal, but essentially repackaging the planning commission staff report. Obviously, with any new information that may have come up between the two hearings.
But the risk is, at the council hearing then, things can come out of nowhere that no one's prepared to address.
Yes, but I would argue that happens now. But I would also say that I do agree with the statement that the city attorney made with respect to, there should be some basis of appeal, because in my research of the matter, you know, every city generally, there has to be some basis. It shouldn't just, there needs to be some grounds of appeal, in my opinion.
Thank you.
And I did, I did reach out to our city manager, and I did ask him if he would support this, and he basically said yes. Councilmember Figueroa?
Yeah, just a few things, because I've had a limited sample experience, you know, in my 90 days, and the one is Vista Bella. When that came before us, I saw this room full of residents that were really upset, and I know that they wanted us to look at, they had done further research in the scope of their appeal. If they could, it would have grown what it was before us, and I know that there is desire from the public. For our city attorney and city manager, do we know what other cities here in San Diego County have this process? Or a similar process?
Sure. So we're in the process of surveying that as to the other cities. There is frequently a de novo review level at the city council, but like I said, almost universally, there is a requirement for the appellant to set forth the issues and basis on appeal. Moreover, some of the cities actually include an even more stringent requirement, which is if you did not raise the issue at the planning commission, if you did not put it in writing, you did not appear and hear it, then that is not an issue at which the appellant can be heard. Again, that does not restrict necessarily the city council's level of review, but it will restrict what the appellants can bring forward. And additionally, that's typical in appeals at any level, right? If you're going to add newer additional evidence, you should typically have a basis on which you could not have presented that evidence in the first hearing, right? That's how you preserve the integrity of the planning commission while still preserving your right to, you know, hear the item. But again, we would look at what the best practices are, what the other cities are providing, and bring that back as part of the recommendation, consistent with the council's guidance here. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Joyce?
I would just, just to kind of talk a little bit about what was brought up with streamlining versus slowing down the process. I think that this council understands that streamlining projects that we support, that we think are great projects, I think we're all behind that. I think the general plan update is going to provide us some opportunities to do that. I think this is a, again, for me, this comes down to fulfilling the duties of the job in the best way that we can, and so I'm going to be supporting it. I look forward to hearing staff's professional opinion about the best way to do it. And yeah, thanks for partnering.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 3-2. Robinson, Weiss, no.
Thank you. We're at the end, so general council member comments. Going to hear about DC. First, council member Figueroa.
Yeah, so a few updates happening in District 3 between now and our next meeting. Tomorrow, our chief of police is going to be continuing his listening sessions. He already did one in District 4. District 1 tomorrow is the listening session in District 4, District 3. It will be at 6:30 PM at South Oak Elementary in the South Oak community. On Tuesday, March 25th, at John Landis Park, we are going to be having our ribbon cutting for the skate park. So thanks to the Parks and Recs, they're not, I don't think they're here anymore, but the Parks and Recs team, thank you so much for moving that project forward. The Tri-City community, John Landis community is super excited, so thank you to staff for that. So that will be March 25th, starting at 4:00 PM at John Landis Park. Also happening at John Landis this week on Saturday, starting at 9:00 AM, it's a full-day class from 9:00 AM to 4:30. Oceanside Fire Department is doing their emergency preparedness course, listos for the community. This one will be in English. Participants will earn a certificate of completion. Registration is required, and you can find that on the city website. The Spanish course will be happening, I believe, later this month. They'll be covering natural disaster response, earthquakes, family communication, reunification planning, amongst a bunch of other things as well. So thank you to Oceanside Fire Department for that. And then also pertaining to District 3, we have the Oceanside Inland Rail Trail feasibility study. This is, City of Oceanside conducting a feasibility study for final segment of the 21-mile inland rail trail. There's going to be an in-person, open house community workshop, March 17th, here at the Civic Center Library Community Rooms, between 5:30 and 7:30 PM. And residents can also take the survey at oseinenlandrailtrail.org, and that survey will be available until March 31st. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Joyce?
Thank you. I also got to attend Chief Alvinos's District 1 listening session, which was really well-attended, so I appreciate him following through with that. We are looking at the kickoff of the Crown Heights mural planning process coming along here shortly, as the artists are gathering and our leads are gathering community, and so that's really exciting process that's moving forward right now. So I did have the tremendous honor of representing the city in Sacramento and DC on our most recent legislative advocacy trips, and I first want to say how awesome our staff is. Assistant city manager Michael Gosman and coastal zone manager Jamie Timberlake were a part of the Sacramento contingency, and they did a phenomenal job advocating for our city across, oh, I'm sorry, also Housing Director Leilani Hines. Really important, I want to make sure that we include her, because we talked a lot about housing and what the state is both requiring of us in the density bonus realm and the outcome of a density bonus. And while it had positive intent, it is, its actual ramifications for each and every city are very different. So we talked about that. We talked about stabilizing housing funding, and we also talked a lot about coastal management, and there are so many different organizations that you go to for coastal management grants. And so just trying to, we had meetings with several different agencies, and they all have grants that have very specific requirements, and so looking at the best way to manage the San Luis Rey River Mouth, our Buena Vista Lagoon restoration project, which is really important, and it's been a long time coming, and then also looking again at the re-beach and sand efforts that we have along our ocean and coastal protections there. So we had some really great conversations with those agencies, and then also with our representative Senator Blakespear and Assemblymember Davies. Senator Blakespear was really excited to hear about the movement on the Buena Vista Lagoon, and she's very interested in supporting that effort and trying to make sure that we get that done for both our city and for Carlsbad, because we share that responsibility. We also had some time with the Attorney General Bonta's office, speaking about making sure that all of our communities feel safe in this. that all of our communities feel safe in this rapidly changing environment. We talked about making sure that folks feel safe in their housing, folks feel like they can use the Bonta's office when they have questions about their security. And so that was a really good meeting. Then the time in DC. So we met with several, we met with lots of departments in DC. One of the biggest partnerships that we have is the Army Corps of Engineers. And so the Army Corps is a partner on the San Luis Rey River Flood Protection Project, and that is a massive project that we are working alongside them with. We had great conversations about that. We also had conversations about making sure that our harbor dredging program, which happens every year, which is a public safety and also happens to have a byproduct, putting sand on our beaches, continues. And then we talked about finishing up the Ocean Side Shoreline Study, and that's the study of the impact of the building of our harbor on our beaches and how the Army Corps of Engineers is planning a project to make up for the lack of sand movement that comes out of the river and up and downstream because of the building of the harbor. So those projects, having now gone for the second year in a row, it was really great to have those conversations with the Army Corps. They are moving the project along and funding the rest of the study and then providing a project that the city needs to get behind. And we were trying to work with them to make sure that that project is something that we all agree is in the best interest of the city. We talked about some other infrastructure projects. And then just broadly, takeaways from the trip, because we met with a lot of folks. We talked a lot about housing. We talked a lot about our, our bridge at the pier, which is a really important project for the city as well. The agencies that we met with are generally experiencing a lot of turmoil. And I've been asked about this since I've been back by almost anyone who found out that we went there. We had some very sobering meetings with folks who were higher up in those agencies, who have had to essentially dismiss thousands of federal workers. And I just want to be super clear about this, there's not a plan to pick up that work right now. This is all happening in real time, and it's happening to workers that are there to carry forward the mission of public service. And so we had, honestly, we're there asking for funds and to keep our cities' federal projects moving forward, and it was sometimes very challenging, because they don't have the answers either about what their agency is going to look like in the next week. So I have no doubt that those cuts are going to trickle down and have an impact on our communities. It's hard to know exactly how that's going to look right now. I know that in all of our conversations with the elected officials and with the agency's leadership themselves, they're committed to trying to see through the mission of those projects, but they, like us, don't have the answers about what's going to happen tomorrow. So we're all trying to really get our handles around what that looks like, whether, you know, our, for instance, the rail trail was just brought up. There was an executive order calling for counseling anything around green infrastructure. And so, you know, we're all, we're checking on our grants to make sure that the projects that we think, and we have been working to move forward over the last decades, continue to move forward for the people of our city. And so we're going to do the best that we can, and I wish I could tell you that it was all good to go, but we have a lot of uncertainty, and we're going to work really hard to make sure that the services that we provide continue to go forward, even though this uncertainty is the operation that we're under. So, thanks.
Great. Anyone else? Okay. On February 20th, the, I believe, the entire council attended the Charles Seda Rees Post Office dedication, which was made possible by Congressman Levin. I think, was it a two-year? Yeah, a two-year work that he just kept going back and going back, and he did it. Charles Seda Rees was, is the founding member of the Oceanside Chapter of the North County NAACP. So it's very, very exciting. There was, there were a lot of family members there from other parts of the country that were there. Back in the day, there was redlining. A lot of folks ended up just being able to buy, if you were African-American or a person of color at all, there was only one place that you could buy or live in Oceanside back in the day, and that was the Eastside community. So there were a lot of folks there who previously had lived in the Eastside. It was pretty, pretty exciting. On the 21st, I attended the Sandag Transportation Committee meeting. It was a joint session with Borders and Regional Planning. It was at Caltrans. So basically, they're, you know, really moving on the plans. There will be some presentations. I'm going to be asking for a presentation to the council. I also got a briefing on the status of the Buena Vista Lagoon, which seems to have stalled. It is about 35% environmental, the, excuse me, the engineering work is where they've gotten so far. They were hoping to, we were hoping it would be closer to 65%. Idea being that we want to get it shovel-ready. But it's also somehow getting hooked into the I-578, which hasn't even started yet in terms of, the only thing that's been funded for the I-578 is, are the environmental studies, and they're going to, they're basically hitting the reset button on that. So again, it's, that is being delayed. They did have a couple of meetings, including the one with the SouthO community, but again, this is going to get, be a restart. Also attended the Manufactured Home Workshop. We had someone here from the state office, basically talking about what the state is, has authority over, versus, and then everything else is the city of Oceanside. So it was really, really a good, an interesting meeting. There were a lot of questions, and it was really, really great to have somebody from the state to be able to answer those questions. So thank you to Leilani Hines for having make that happen. We had also a mayor's meeting to discuss projects and things that are happening along the 78. We, and then we had the Buena Vista Lagoon Joint Powers Committee. So again, we are moving forward, but definitely we need to work closer with Carlsbad and get more of a plan moving forward. There is a very real potential for getting on the Caltrans Public Works list, but at the same time, 95% of the lagoon is owned by the state. So we're looking to get, getting funding from state as well. So Coastal Conservancy was actually, at one time, leading the EIR and ended up pulling out because they wanted to basically just, just do a preferred, one preferred alternative. Since, since Sandag ended up taking over that, we do have a finished EIR. We do have buy-in by all the stakeholders. We had a Sandag Board meeting on the realignment of the rail at Del Mar. It was, this was basically, again, hitting a reset button, because there had been a decision on what alternatives they were going to study, and there was a lot of pushback on that. So this, this was yet another meeting to go back, and they came up with four alternatives that they're studying, along with a no-build. On March 4th, there was a county regional summit on behavioral health strategies. Our city was reached out to, asked the mayors, actually all mayors, to come and testify. And so I did, as to our city's needs, and basically with respect to mental health professionals as well as social workers. They did adopt a resolution to move forward. There is a lot of uncertainty, because there are a lot of federal dollars that are involved with that as well. I did, I did attend the CRC meeting. Basically, I had been speaking to folks in Vista and also hearing from Orange County that there are these organized corporations that are coming in from LA, also San Diego and San Bernardino, bringing in the food carts. And knowing that they are not licensed, they are not, these folks who come here have to stay with the cart all day long, they can't go to the bathroom, they can't eat, they can't do anything. So in a way, what they're doing also is violating a lot of labor laws, but they're also competing with our brick-and-mortar Latino businesses, and we've gotten several complaints about that. So we really, I know that the City of Vista is very proactive. They actually have presence and are working on weekends as well, and even until 10:00, 10:00 PM. So I'm hoping that we can partner with City of Vista. They're, they're being very proactive, so is Orange County. So that means that the illegal street vendor corporation, the corporate street vendor, whatever program, they're pushing them into Oceanside, the illegal. So that's going to be on the, I believe, on the next council agenda. Yeah. I attended the Airport Authority meeting on March 6th, on behalf of the North Coastal Cities. I also attended the, on March 8th, the first Oceanside International Women's Day celebration. March 10th, I attended the Mayor's Selection Committee to finish the appointments with respect to Coastal Commission, as well as to the Air Pollution Control District Board. And then also attended the League of California Cities San Diego Chapter meeting. At that meeting, there was a presentation by District Attorney Summer Stephan with respect to Prop 36 and how she is moving forward, starting with Drug Court. Basically, right now, Drug Court is at 50%, so they're going to be using those slots to, for Prop 36. So lots and lots of work happening here in the region, in the city of Oceanside, as well as, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, for going to DC and to Sacramento. Any other comments? No? Okay. So our next meeting is March 19th, here at the council chambers for a council workshop on the general plan update. Please come. It's at 5:30, March 19th. That's next Wednesday. And then the following Wednesday, March 26th, we have another city council meeting.
I'm just sorry, I just remembered last thing.
Okay, meeting's not adjourned yet?
So close.
Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to wish our newest council member a happy birthday today. So happy birthday.
Happy birthday!
I don't know if we should sing or not, but I appreciate it.
Right. Meeting adjourned.[1771.26][1771.26][music]